Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started and the meeting is now come to order. If everyone will please stand for the invocation and is led by Ms. Dixon followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Our heavenly Father, we're thankful for this opportunity that we had to meet together in this city council meeting and for those that are present with us and we are mindful of the city and the community in which we serve. Help us to be mindful of them, help us to make decisions that will benefit all those that we serve. We are grateful for the guidance that we receive from you and pray that throughout this meeting tonight that we will receive the guidance necessary to do those things that would be honorable to you and honorable and uplifting to the community. And this we say in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lyd, if you'll call the roll.
Be happy to. Councilmember Hendricks, here. Councilmember Dixon.
Here.
Councilmember Bowling, here. Councilmember Spence, here. Councilmember King.
Here.
Council President Simmons.
Here.
Madam President, we have all six council members in attendance and therefore our quorum is present.
Thank you very much. Can we get an approval of the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bowling, second by Ms. Dixon, all in favor of motion.
Six, zero, motion carries.
Okay. The mayor is absent on today, but Mr. Lyd, our city clerk, has something, some resolutions that he would like to read.
Madam President, we had, we've got two appointments that the mayor wanted to make. One, actually, he made at the last meeting, but we didn't get it on the meeting, get it on the on the agenda, and that is for Mr. Jimmy Oliver to serve as a member of the planning commission effective first Monday in November. And his appointment will expire the first Monday in November of 2029. And then tonight, he wanted to reappoint Mr. Ethan Burbank to serve on the planning commission and his appointment will expire on the first Monday in November of 2029.
Thank you very much. Do we have any reports from any department heads? We don't have any standing committees at this time. We don't have any public hearings at this time. So at this time, we'll have business from the floor pertaining to items on the consent and the regular agenda with five-minute time limit. If you would, come to the podium and state your name and your address. We'll start to my right.
Hello, my name is David Carson. I live in Florence, Alabama. As far as my address is concerned, I am willing to give someone my, preferably a police officer, my license to prove where I live because I don't like announcing my address online because there's a lot of crazy people online. So, is that okay? All right.
Give it to Mr. Lyd, or you can record it. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to ask about, I think it's consent agenda, item T. This is involving a liability claim that you're voting to be settled today in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, a liability from from Billy Eugene Armstead against the city of Florence. This was not even mentioned during the work session. I will, just like another liability claim a few months earlier in the year. I will find out all about this after, of course, you guys spoke this through, through Freedom of Information request. So before I asked with that case if Musgrove could comment at all about this and he said, "I don't give legal advice." Well, I'm not asking for legal advice. I want to know, can you provide any information about this liability claim? And if not, why not? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right? In the middle? To my left? Order, Mr. Lyd.
All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed each member of the Florence City Council for reading and study, are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the council with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, they'll automatically be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request.
Do you hear motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Spence, second by Ms. King, all in favor.
Six, zero, motion carries.
Regular agenda.
Regular agenda, item A is an ordinance to renew the lease for outdoor seating with North Alabama Restaurant Group LLC. Due business as Mug Shots Restaurant located at 321 North Courts, 3 Florence, Alabama, sponsored by Bill Musgrove.
Do you hear motion for immediate consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hendricks, second by Mr. Bowling, all in favor of the motion.
Six, zero.
Do you hear motion for the adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hendricks, second by Mr. Bowling, any discussion? All in favor of the motion.
Six, zero, motion carries. Did we, did we table the standing committees?
We did not. No, we need to vote.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, we didn't take this.
Resolution to approve the appointment of members of the city council to the various standing committees, sponsored by President Simmons.
Do you hear? Do you hear motion for the immediate consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Spence, second by Ms. King, all in favor of the motion.
Six, zero.
Do you hear motion for the adoption?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bowling, second by Ms. Dixon, any discussion? All in favor of the motion.
Six, zero, motion carries. Item C is a resolution to approve a software system and license agreement between the city of Florence and Golf Complete Incorporated. Due business as Four Up for the Florence Parks and Recreation Department, sponsored by Bill Jordan.
Do you hear motion for immediate consideration?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Dixon, good second.
Second.
Second by Ms. King, all in favor of the motion.
Six, zero.
Do you hear motion for the adoption?
Motion.
I'll second it. Motion by Mr. Bowling, second by Katrina, any discussion?
Yes, President Simmons, you know, as we discussed in the work session, this is a, just a simple, we ended our, we, the golf course ended their contract with their current supplier as far as with the online tee times and credit card transactions. And they are now swapping over to a new company that's, it's gonna be more beneficial to them, that's gonna lower the amount, the percentage that we're paying for transactions. So it's a very good move on behalf of the golf course.
Okay. Any additional discussion for anyone? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Six, zero, motion carries.
General business?
Under general business, item A is application for an alcohol beverage license by Jar Properties for a special event to be held at 200 Jim Spain Drive, McFarland Park on Friday, December 5th, 2025, with on-premises liquor, beer, and wine. And this is, it's a Christmas party. And again, it is McFarland Park and sponsored by Robert M. Lyd.
Do you hear motion for the immediate consideration?
So moved.
Second. It's motion by Mr. Hendricks, second by Katrina, all in favor of the motion.
Six, zero.
Do you hear motion for the adoption?
So moved.
Second. It's motion by Mr. Hendricks, second by Katrina, any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Six, zero, motion carries. That's all, have it, Madam President.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have business from the public with a five-minute time limit. Please come to the podium and state your name. We'll start to my left this time. In the middle?
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. To the Council of the Ray Simpson, 755 West Alabama Street, Plumb. Well, I'd like to commend all the people that came and took part in our Veterans Day event. It was magnificent to see the council members, I believe all of y'all was there, to see all the great things that have taken place and still taking place at our Veterans Park. Being a veteran myself, I was very much appreciative that we haven't forgotten Veterans Park. Just the name lets us know that somebody cares. So I appreciate y'all taking part and let's continue to do that every year, but it's a beautiful place. A place where we can come, everyone else can come, and really know why this country is so great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the middle? Not to my right?
Hello, my name is David Carson. I live in Florence, Alabama. Before I forget, so yeah, I'm back in town. The, I hope you guys enjoyed your photo ops so far. Enjoyed your honeymoon. I think the honeymoon is about over. I'm gonna start on that a little bit. I was watching last meeting, I think it was Ron Tyler, someone mentioned that wasn't a lot of votes last election. A lot of, not a lot of people came out and voted, it was a low turn, a voter turnout. And there's a reason for that, actually. That's, I think we got more than I actually thought we was going to. It's because we're now having elections a year after the presidential elections. So I really enjoy that, I really like that the state of Alabama decided to do that because it's completely changed the political dynamic as far as elections is concerned, I think. Normally, people in power in local governments would depend on people coming out in droves to vote for the president, you know, the vote for the blue team or the red team, you know, and people would sort of just fill in the city council like just through name recognition and how many signs they saw. The situation's completely different now. Situation is now that you are always gonna have low voter turnout from here on out because there's not that many, only people that's gonna show up and vote on these off years are people who actually pay attention to local governments. And so that means people like me and others that help educate the public of what's going on have a little bit more political sway than we did in the past. People have more options than just the times daily now. So I just wanted to throw that out there, you know. Y'all ran pretty good campaigns, people won, our council looks a lot different now. But also, some people also created a lot of enthusiasm and sustained it for a couple of years. It caused people to come out and vote. So people like me matter, is basically what I'm saying, and I'm not alone. Now that the honeymoon's over, I would like to ask, does this council, do you represent the citizens to the local government or do you represent the local government to the citizens? The last council seemed to really represent the local government to the citizens. I think as elected by the population, they used to represent the citizens to the local government. There is a big difference. You know, we have our interests, city government has their interests, and I would like to see that turned on its head a little bit. That's what I, the reason I got out and voted a few months ago. We want real change. Sometimes that looks like people not getting along. I think everyone's, you know, you make a show for the camera, shaking hands, smiling, everyone's getting along, like, there's, there's corruption, there's stuff to fight. And people showed up in droves last election to fight that. So I hope you, you guys don't think you're off the hook. I'm here to hold your feet to the fire, and I will. I'll do this to the best of my ability. I'm getting better at this each time I do this. So that's, that's why I'm here. I'm not here to show people sunshine and rainbows and thank you for like letting me breathe. No, I'm here to hold your feet to the fire because that's, that is needed. So we need the nepotism reigned in, we need special, special interests nately, the liberal arts college, UNA, reigned in because I think UNA has way too much influence on local government. They get, you know, a check for a half a million for nothing, just sent to them every year now. Last I checked, that's still on the proposed budget. And I hear that Project Say Something is currently working with our city government to steal, to alter, to put a plaque in front of the Confederate statue out there. No one's asked me to show up and give the other side of the argument. So they got a seat at the table. Why can't someone like me and people I represent have a seat table or something like that? You know, um. Yeah, I'm ready. There's nowhere to hide. Me and others, we want a seat at the table. If we don't get a seat at the table, we'll create the seat, we'll create another table. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right?
Good afternoon. Eric Foster, 2708 Morgan Street. I know I usually get up there and say I wasn't going to plan to speak, and I wasn't until somebody started talking about the University of North Alabama. I just want to say, imagine the city without UNA, what it would be. The enrollment at UNA is over 10,000 people. Think about what that adds to our economy. Without UNA, Florence would not be half the city it is. So, you know, it doesn't bother me when people get up here and speak about you guys, the council giving money to UNA because you have to think about what UNA brings in. So I have no issue with money going to University of North Alabama. A lot of my money out of my pocket is going to University of North Alabama with two kids graduating from there. You know, we have students here from UNA and I'm glad to see them involved, see them here just about every meeting. So, you know, I just wanted to get up here and stand in support because there again, I couldn't imagine what the city would look like if UNA hadn't been here for so many years. Appreciate the time, y'all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else to my right? If not, we will have council member, council member reports, starting with Mr. Hendricks.
Okay, as always, I'd like to thank everyone that took the time to come out tonight. It's nice to see our UNA SGA body over there again, this meeting. Also to those that are watching or will watch on YouTube. And I also want to congratulate our school board. They were sworn in Thursday night. Several of us went to that and, you know, they worked as hard as we did over the summer for those positions. So I want to get that congratulation out there. Got a couple of departments I need to give a shout out to. First Water Department, I think, Ted Cole and Will Haddock. When I was campaigning, there's Dead End Street, and three of the five houses I went to all filmed the same story about groundwater. And so I made some phone calls and it turns out that our system of water in the city kind of works like the water in a hotel where it circulates all the time. And that, that keeps it from kind of cleaning the walls of the pipe and creating this groundwater situation. I'm speaking way over my, my head here with the knowledge, but anyway, they were able to install what they called an auto flusher at the end of that line. And the neighborhood will help dial it in as they, as they said. And we've had some really, really, really good success with this. And, and I just appreciate our wonderful department heads for working with us on that. Also have an update on the parking deck and getting these fences down out here on these streets. Haven't received any calls on it yet, but I know it's coming. And so I wanted to get, get some information, get that out there. They should finish all the curb and gutter and sidewalk concrete work by Thanksgiving. And then the next step will be the paving. Of course, there'll be some striping of all of that so that we can get our streets back open because we, I really want these streets open by Black Friday, but that obviously is not gonna happen. But they certainly don't need to stay closed during our Christmas season downtown. So they're doing everything they can do to get those open and hopefully the weather will hold. And I'll keep a daily check on that on behalf of the downtown district. Would like to remind everybody, the qualification board, their tree lighting is Sunday night from 5:00 to 7:00 on North Court Street. Please come out and attend that event. There'll be carols and lighting and it's a, it's a lot of fun, family friendly. So if you have children, be certain to show up for that. And I'll finish by wishing everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving, especially those that may have family that's traveling. And I want to encourage you to do something, and this is something I try to do every year, Thanksgiving and Christmas. And I like to pause and I like to just look at the room and be appreciative of everyone that's in that room. Because none of us know what next year may bring. And so do that and be thankful. That's all we've got.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon?
I didn't really have too much today. I just wanted to thank those that have come and those that are viewing on YouTube. Appreciate the opportunity to have our meetings go out to those who cannot be in attendance physically. And thank you for being involved in, in city government and, and being concerned about it. Just also wanted to wish you all very happy Thanksgiving, whatever that looks like for you and be thankful to God.
Thank you. Mr. Bowling?
I don't have a whole lot either, but I would like to thank everybody for being here tonight. The Veterans Day program was phenomenal. It was so awesome to be there and to get to talk to several veterans. And, and we appreciate their service and their sacrifice, you know, not only to them, but to their families as well. My father was a Vietnam vet, grandfather Korean War, and grandfather, other grandfather, World War II. So it means a lot to see all of our veterans there and just appreciate what they do. That's a special day for our country. And it was special to be there representing the city. I, I do want to comment real briefly, if you were in the work session, about the Coliseum and the change order to that. I had the opportunity to sit in that meeting, like I said, in the work, in the work session as a contractor brain. But I, I hope to do more of that for the city. I feel like it, we, they were, in a lot of municipalities, contractors may take advantage of certain places and for people that might not have the knowledge to know if a change order should happen or not, or how much that change order should be, or all the specifics to it. And, you know, that's something that I really want to focus on. We, because that's your tax dollars, right? And that's, that's important to me. So I feel like I have a very good knowledge of the contractor world and I hope to use that knowledge to help benefit the city and no matter what we do. So it was great to sit, that was like my first meeting, I guess, I got to sit in on. So it was really great to see how that worked. You know, Bill did a great job leading that meeting. And, and everybody was, and there were a lot of contractors there on behalf of the city. Not being paid by the city, not because they love the city of Florence and they want to make sure the city of Florence thrives and are getting a good deal. So they were sitting there on behalf of you as well. So we appreciate those guys taking time out of their day to just come in and sit in on that meeting to make sure everything's on the up and up, I guess you'd say. So Thanksgiving next week, oh wait, let me, President Simmons has a birthday this Friday, so I'd like to wish a happy birthday to her, early birthday. And then Thanksgiving happens, so. President Simmons first and then Thanksgiving. So next week is a very special week as well. We get to sit and, you know, sit at the table with folks that we love. So do that if you have a chance and enjoy that day of Thanksgiving. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Spence?
We want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and thank you for your service. And also to those who are watching online, we appreciate that. We want our community involved with us in participating and getting involved and reaching out and doing that. Want to remind everybody about the pet license. They can get with the city clerk's office. But our thoughts and prayers go out to the Wilson community and what has recently happened with that system there, with the school system. I think we need to remember them and know that there are services available in our own community for those who may be struggling. And, you know, the crisis lifeline is 9-8-8. All you have to do is dial that. So let's remember them and continue to remember them and our thoughts and prayers as a community. Of course, Jackie said something about the tree lighting. We want to invite everyone out to that. And also, happy birthday to Ms. Simmons on Friday. But to our city employees and wishing them and their families a happy Thanksgiving and for what they do for our city. We're grateful for each and every one of you and what you do. So we want to recognize that. And, you know, we're in a season of giving. We're going into Thanksgiving and Christmas. So let's be mindful of what our community has to offer and the different programs and things that are happening. And let's, let's remember, check on your neighbor, see about your neighbor and do things like that. But we wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and, you know, to our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. King?
Again, I am very thankful to be here with everybody tonight. This is such a blessing to sit up here and yes, the Veterans Day program was amazing. So glad to get to be a part of such wonderful things in our city. So on Saturday, there will be an event in Rogersville for the Kramer Children's Center. They are having Plucking for a Cause. It is at the Cotton Gin in Rogersville from 11:00 to 5:00. They will be having a petting zoo, a chicken drop, live music, food vendors, a fall market, food market vendors as well. They will be having a squirrel named Twiggy doing water skiing at 2:30 on Saturday. Tickets, you can purchase those online, get on Facebook or through the Kramer Children's Center and purchase those, or you can purchase those there. This is for a great cause. If you aren't familiar with the Kramer Children's Center, they support children under the age of 19 who have experienced abuse or witnessed violence. I've taken a tour and met those ladies and stayed in contact with that team of people. They are absolutely amazing. So if you have a minute to go by, anytime, donate to them, see what they're all about. We would love to see you in Rogersville. I will be there on Saturday with them for a little while. Love this time of year. It's a great time to start volunteering. If you would love to volunteer somewhere, I have got a long list of places that would love to have you. Please call me at 256-956-9621. Contact me. I would love to hear from you. If you have any problems, complaints, or anything, please call me. I'd love to help you learn to volunteer in this community as well. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I hope that you're able to spend a lot of time with family and friends and just take time to think about the things that we're thankful for. I know everybody can find something to be thankful for in this holiday season. It's wonderful to be here. Thank you all for coming out. For those watching at home, we hope to continue to see this city council meeting grow with people. We hope to continue to see this city council meeting grow with people from our community to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. My comments, want to say thank you for everyone that is present, that those are tuning in. Also want to give my thank you to my pastor, Pastor Knox. And the Knox Media Group had hosted their second annual, it was the second annual Thanksgiving in the park on this past Sunday in Wilson Park. It was a phenomenal success. Lots of people came out, lots of organizations and volunteers. And so it was hundreds of, hundreds of people there. So just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. Every day to me is a day of Thanksgiving, and so I just can't thank them enough for that very, very successful event. That's something that I hope that will be able to continue. Also want to say thank you to Tad Cole. Had to call him on Saturday. There was a situation on Mobile Street of an overflow over a sewer manhole. And it was awful, as he explained it in work session, but called him, dispatched him out, they came out immediately and took care of that problem. So just want to say again, thank you to Tad Cole and the water sewer employees. To our veterans, thank you Reverend Simpson. Thank you to all the veterans for what you ultimately sacrificed twice was. So I do appreciate you for all of that. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody. And also, thank you guys for my birthday shout out. I love my birthday, so thank you all so much. I do. I love my born day. And that's all. Nothing else next to come to our attention. We will start with a closing prayer from Councilwoman Bowing. Thank you all for coming.
Let's pray together. Father God, we just thank you so much for this day and for just blessing us with life. Father, we just ask you to pour your blessings down on this city that we can continue to honor you in everything that we do, honor you in every decision that we make. And Father, when we leave here today, that I just pray that we go out and we honor you in, in everything that we do. Father, we thank you most of all for your son, Jesus, and his sacrifice on the cross. And in the mighty name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.